We live? We're live. Okay, well, welcome to the first round of committee for the term, the fresh term of council for 2024. I would like to give the acknowledgement of country. The Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as the custodians of the lands, winds and water we all share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and the stories of a proud people.
Would you like to call attendants?
Attendants, those in attendance are the Deputy Chair, Councillor Paul Tully, councillors Nicole, Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnick, Mayor Theresa Harding, Councillor David Cullen and Councillor Jim Madden. Are there any, there's no apologies, we are all in attendance. Declarations of interest, is there any declarations around the table? None, I wish to give a declaration, just reviewing which one's the one to put to other councils. This one's a declarable conflict of interest. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, Councillor Andrew Antonelli, informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in the items relating to planning before the, on the agenda. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest is that I am the holder of a real estate salesperson certificate. I invite other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process. Before doing so, I just state for the record that my certificate is effectively in abeyance because I am not signed with a sales agent. So that I cannot operate that certificate until I am effectively committed to a sales agent. I invite the other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process. All those who believe that I should leave the room, all those believe I should remain, show of hands? I'm not sure how it goes, I'm not sure what the wording is.
It's by way of motion.
By way of motion. So I invite the other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process. What's the process?
May I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Which item are you declaring a conflict of interest in?
Just all items relating to planning.
So this is a generic disclosure, that in the future that you would declare if it was, if there was a...
If there was a particular or specific interest, I would, yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Is there any further questions? Do the councillors determine I can continue?
I'd like to move that councillor Antonelli participates and remains in the meeting for the votes on all items.
Is there a seconder? Seconded by Jim Madden, by councillor Madden? All those in favour? Against, that's carried. That was voted unanimously by the voting members.
Could it be noted that you didn't participate in that?
Ah, yes, please note that I did not participate in that vote. I would like to move a motion to change the order of reports, that item one, titled Proposed Ipswich Adopted Infrastructure Charges Resolution Number One of 2024 be considered after item four, titled Asset and Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report, April 2024. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Tully. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. Now, item two, River Heart, Proposed Removal of Overwater Structures. Just in relation to this report, if there's any discussion particularly relevant to the confidential report associated with it, I will need to close the meeting. Is there any discussion in relation to this report? Would the general manager like to speak to the report?
Thank you, Chair. This is a report concerning repeated damage sustained to the overwater structures within the River Heart following the 2022 and 2024 flood events. The recommendation to council is to remove the overwater structures in order to facilitate the site's full recovery. The overwater structures are degrading with each flood event, with increased ongoing financial cost to council to continue to restore these structures. So as listed in the report, the recommendations are that council approve the removal of the overwater structures as detailed on page two and B, that council note that the western deck will be retained, which provides protection and housing for the irrigation pump and the associated infrastructure. Are there any specific questions in regards to the report?
Open up for discussion, yes. Councillor, sorry, Mayor Harding?
If I may, Chair. I'm guessing I'm wanting to have explained to residents that the flood occurred over two years ago and we're coming to this over two years. Do you mind taking us through the process of why it has taken this amount of time?
Thank you, Mayor Harding. Through you, Chair, the consideration around the courses of action available to us is something that we've given a lot of thought and we've run through a number of different scenarios in reaching the recommendation that we've made to council today. Once the event occurred, we needed to go through a process of making the site safe and as a result, we put up significant fencing which remained in situ for an extended period. We had to go through the site, remove detritus and flood-related damage and material and we had to ensure the bank was stable. Following on from that, we then needed to procure an external engineering organisation to conduct a review of the site itself to determine what we could do going forward. That was conducted and as we were following on to conduct procurement to actually reinstate the site, we experienced the additional inundation in February of 2022. As a result, we needed to re-enter that process and go back to the start, put in place the fencing, conduct an engineering assessment. At that point, we started to challenge our thinking and ask whether or not it was financially viable for council to continue to reinstate the site at every, every stage of inundation. As the report indicates, since the site's construction, there has been a significant increase in the number of inundation events and unfortunately, due to what appears to be climate change, we are experiencing events of that nature with more and more frequency.
Any further questions, Mayor Harding? Any further questions around the table? Yes, councillor Madden?
Could you indicate where the location of the western deck is to be retained? Is it more towards the water park?
So it's the most upstream deck, so on page eighty-two of one eighty-two on the report. At the bottom of that, there's identified structures proposed for removal. On the far left-hand side of that diagram, you can see one red highlighted deck. If you come directly left of that red deck, you'll see another deck which is not highlighted red. That's the deck in question that will be retained.
Thanks very much. Just a bit confused by western, north, south, east, west.
Any further questions? I have a series of questions that I might ask. Just with respect to the, if we were to retain the ongoing repairs that would be required to the overwater structure, are there other state provisions that we need to adhere to in relation to the maintenance of those structures?
In regards to the technical questions, Chair, I might refer to Matt Malroni, the officer responsible for the flood recovery.
Could you just, Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Chair. The, the maintenance of those structures is exempt from a lot of the permitting, permits through the state, so that's pure maintenance. The trouble we have, Chair, is those structures are quite unique to this, this city and we don't have any, any contractors in this city that, that are able to do overwater structures, marine environment type structures. So we need to bring in contractors from outside the city, along with barges and, and floating platforms to be able to work from. That's our major issue.
And, and obviously that comes at a significant cost.
Significant cost, that's right.
The other question, two questions I have. One is just in relation to the consultation on the other structures under consideration, the switchback, I think, as we're referring to it. Is there any ability for us to do any consultation associated with this as well? Not necessarily with respect to the removal, but the ongoing appearance of that area. Can we include anything in that consultation?
Absolutely, Chair. We've, we've got a, an engagement plan drafted, ready to go and our, our intent is to actually obtain from the community what their, their wishes are with that site moving forward as to do with the landscaping, et cetera.
Thank you, Matthew. The last question I have is just, I note that there are, there is one other small structure that's not highlighted in red on page eighty-two of the report. That is between the first red structure or the highlighted structure to the left or west, I think you call it, and, and then the next large structure, there is a small structure there. Is that to be included in removal or is that to be retained as well?
The, the plan for that one, Chair, was to, to have it remain. It is a very small deck and is, is not causing any problems in the riverbank. So it's able to be maintained from the riverbank, doesn't require specialist equipment. So our intent was to leave that one there.
Yeah, and I just note that there is the other small one that is tucked in behind the larger structure. Is that, is that one possible to remain as well?
We can certainly look at that. I, I think that one probably could remain as well. We just need to, to look at the maintenance issues associated with it.
Do we need any recommendation in relation to that or just a matter of internal?
I'd leave that to the GM.
I think we can manage that internally.
Any questions in relation to that? I put the recommendation to the committee, all those in favour? Against?
So are you, are you voting on the actual motion itself?
Yes, the motions.
We haven't moved in second yet.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Do we have, do we have? Does anyone wish to move the recommendations? That's moved by councillor Madden, seconder, councillor Johnick, all those in favour?
Can we have discussion, please?
We have the discussion after the motion's moved. Is there further discussion then?
Yes, please, yeah, look, under the meeting procedures, we can't do discussion until the matter is moved and seconded. I'd like to, Chair, know that I think River Heart Parkland is one of Ipswich's most well-known and much-loved parks. River Heart Parklands has been open for, for just twelve months when it was first hit by flooding in a minor event in 2008, extensively in 2011, again in 2013, 2017, twice in 2022 and earlier this year as well. Ultimately, whether it's the state or the feds or council, the community foots the bill every time River Heart Parklands floods and requires extensive clean-up and repairs. And we know those repairs cost over a million dollars each time a flood happens. So I know that it's a much-loved parkland, but we also know that the community have told us loud and clear that they don't want council wasting their money fixing assets that will flood again and again. And we saw that with the Colloquial Crossing communication. So I'll be supporting this, Chair, but I just want to acknowledge the fact that it is a really well-loved part of Ipswich and, and look forward to doing the consultation with, with the community.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? Just in, with respect to your, what you've raised, Mayor Harding, yes, I totally agree. I seem to recall that the River Heart Parklands received some awards for its design. I can't be a hundred percent certain, but I do believe back in about 2008, it did receive a design award and it has been much-loved. But certainly the impact of numerous floods has been significant, something that wasn't foreseen, the number of floods, considering there'd been some significant decades since previous floods had been, had occurred in Ipswich. So it certainly has caused a rethink. So I put the recommendation to the vote again. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. Now, item three. Springfield Central E-Scooter Pilot. Would you like to speak to the matter?
Thank you, Chair. So this is a report concerning the electric scooter pilot scheme, which is being held in the Springfield Central area. In particular, the report discusses the pilot to date and our proposal to extend the pilot to enable collection of additional data to support council's future position for micro-mobility devices across the city. The recommendations are that the report be received and the contents noted and that council approve the extension of the current e-scooter pilot in Springfield Central for an additional twelve months to the first of July 2025, with an option for an additional twelve-month extension if considered necessary.
Any questions? Yes, Mayor Harding?
Through you, Chair, Mr Anderson, have there been any accidents in the trial?
Through you, Chair, Mayor, I, I understand there have been no incidents related to the riding of e-scooters as part of the trial, which is a remarkable result. I will ask Tony Dillio, the ranch manager responsible in ISP, to respond further.
Thank you, and through the Chair, that you're correct, General Manager, that there have been no reported crashes related to the, the pilot.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, councillor Tully?
Just wanted to clarify, in relation to the recommendation B, that the option is for council to be able to extend that unilaterally or with, the, the, the company can't, can't exercise an option, is that correct?
That is correct, councillor Tully, yes.
I might move an amendment when we get into this, just to make sure it's a council, it's, it's an option for council to extend it, thank you.
Understood. Any further discussion? Sorry, not discussions, questions? Councillor Cullen?
Have there been any complaints from business owners or where they're riding? Or have the scooter operators been in good order?
Councillor Cullen, there have been, there's been extensive consultation with the business owners, both prior to the implementation and during the trial itself. There have been some matters raised from time to time and both through BEAM and through council, those matters have been resolved quite well.
Any further questions, councillor? Any further questions around the table? I'd like, would someone like to move the recommendation? Move to councillor Johnick?
Seconded.
Seconded councillor Tully. You had an amendment, councillor Tully?
Yes, I think just to clarify this, one hundred percent, I'll move that in paragraph B of the recommendation, after the word option, to insert two words for council, with the option for council, the option for council for an additional twelve-month extension if considered necessary. Just to make it clear that it's our option and not the operator's option.
May I ask a question? Are you saying it would come back to council for a decision?
Well, I'll just see if the mover is happy with the amendment first and then I'll open for discussion. Is the mover happy with the amendment that's been suggested? You are? So that amendment?
It's got to be the second, it's got to be the second as well.
Yeah, but you are the second as well as the mover of the amendment. So I imagine you are happy with it, are you the seconder? Or otherwise?
No, no, there has been a question asked, which I think is relevant and, and that should be considered be, yeah, rather than having the motion changed automatically.
Okay, all right, Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was just wondering when we say council, is that being that it'll come back to this, the council? Or does it just go to council officers to, to decide? So I just wanted clarification, if it's a, council with a capital C.
Yeah, that's a good question. My understanding, well, two things there. One is that the option rests with council, yeah, rather than with the current operator, or extend it to June, July 2026. But I would expect all of these reports because of the nature of them and it's an unusual, this is the first time we've had this, that it would come back to a full council meeting.
Yeah, just to clarify, you'd want it to come back for a approval for the extension to the council?
Well, I think maybe the officer in charge of that would, would, given that, in some ways, the sensitive nature of the matter, that it would come back to council. But my amendment was principally in relation to that the option would rest with council to extend it by another year after the forthcoming year.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr Anderson?
Through you, Chair, I think the original intent, councillor, had been absolutely, as you've identified, that it would be council's prerogative to extend. However, the intent was for council today to approve a twelve-month extension and perhaps for the CEO to have the authority or delegation to exercise the second extension if council deemed that that was appropriate.
Yeah, if I can speak, yeah, in, in relation, we haven't adopted the amendment yet, but I'll, I'll speak generally. Was indicated there'd be no serious complaints, but anecdotally and visibility, there are some issues there. You know, these scooters being placed on, on, on concrete ramps where people, you know, cross roads on them and, you know, whether they, they've run out of power or they, they've, they've gone into an exclusion zone. I think after a year, we should come back because councillor Johnick and myself, we, we see a fair bit of this. It's, it's not end of the world sort of stuff. It, it's a very successful trial, the number of people who are using it. So the, the way in which that could be remedied to make sure that it was a council meeting, with my amendment, if, if the seconder is prepared to accept this change to my proposed amendment, it would read with the option for council by resolution.
Council by resolution.
Council by resolution, that would make it clear it would come back to us.
I, I note that the report doesn't mention which divisions this, this covers, but is this solely one division that it covers? Is it, is it possible to have it by consultation with the councillors, the local councillors?
I, I would think councillor Johnick might have some influence in it, but I think it should come back for a full discussion because if it's successful there, there may be pressure for other parts of the city, for communities across the city. So I, I think all councillors should share the opportunity in twelve months' time to decide where we're heading.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. It, it appears to me that user etiquette is something that needs to be addressed more so than anything else. That seems to be the major problem, would that be your about, right?
Yeah, that, that's, that's an issue and, as I say, it's not end of the world sort of stuff, but there, you know, you see sometimes two or three scooters in the middle of a concrete footpath, you know, situations like that. Yeah, they're not serious breaches, but people sort of, you know, not happy with that, might need, just to make sure that we've got timely retrieval of those scooters. There's a whole range of issues that can be looked at in twelve months' time.
Can I just ask the general manager and the relevant officers to just discuss those concerns further with the division two councillors?
And the mayor, if I can ask, thank you.
Just to ensure that those concerns are covered.
Absolutely, Chair, thank you.
Did you wish to raise something, councillor Johnny?
Oh, just in discussion, it wasn't a question.
So you'd like to amend your amendment or alter your amendment?
Yeah, yeah, proposed amendment to add the words with the option for council by resolution.
Council by resolution? So the recommendation would now, you'll read if, if accepted, the council approved the extension of the current e-scooter pilot in Springfield Central area for an additional twelve months to one July 2025, with the option for council by resolution for an additional twelve-month extension if considered necessary, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And being a revised amendment, if councillor Johnick accepts that, that then becomes the, the amendment.
I do accept that, thank you.
You're happy to accept that amended?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Johnick. All those in favour of the, the amendment being put? Against, and now do we put the motion or is that the? And now put the motion, the recommendations? The recommendations as now contained and amended? All those in favour?
So can we?
That was?
I'm a little bit confused, Chair, sorry. So that was, we just approved the amendment?
Just approved the amendment, and that was unanimous? And now for the entire recommendation?
Okay, so has it been moved and seconded yet? Maybe you have a seconded?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And I, can I, we just go into discussion, sorry, before we take the vote, just really quickly?
My apologies.
No, you're right, Chair. I just wanted to add that we have been consulted really well by the officers in relation to this trial, and it's a two-pronged, you know, community. We get different issues that come up, so people are either loving it or really disliking it. But I think that the extension of this trial through the public transport fares being reduced to 50 cents, we would be, it'd be remiss of us not to extend it through that period to see what the take-up would be. And I do note that BEAM, the operators, have heavily consulted with us as well, and they're always willing to communicate. So I'm looking forward to see what the data brings when the fares get reduced, to see how this assists people getting to public transport to get to work, et cetera. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
May I, Chair? I just want to thank the deputy mayor and councillor Tully for the amendment. I think this is, as it's a pilot in the trial, I think the decisions do need to come to council. I do note that there have not been any BEAM-related e-scooter safety incidences reported across the operating area for the length of the pilot scheme to date, but I have heard some anecdotal, and I've been there too when you've had the scooters whizzed by you. And as the deputy mayor said, I'll be interested to see if the current average of the 2,397 trips per month on e-scooters will be impacted and increased with the state government's new policy for 50 cents for public transport scheme that starts in August. So I think it'll be a really interesting time. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harding. Just in relation to that, I'll be very interested in the outcomes of this as well, having seen what problems have existed in other cities, particularly Brisbane. I'd like to, I guess, be sure that the operator will learn from those matters in Brisbane and address them here locally. Any further discussion? The recommendations have been moved and seconded. I now put the recommendations for the vote. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. I will get used to this clunky way of doing things.
Model meeting procedures, Chair, model meeting procedures.
Item four, I believe we're at now, the asset and infrastructure services department capital delivery. I've asked the general manager to speak to the report.
Thank you, Chair. This is the standard report concerning the performance of the capital delivery by the asset and infrastructure services department for the month of April 2024. The recommendation is that it be received and the contents noted by council. Are there any questions with the report?
Are there any questions? None? I'm just reading through my notes on here, that's all. I, is there a mover for the recommendation, which is to receive and note the contents of the report? Moved by councillor Johnic, seconded by myself? Or is there any discussion? Mayor Harding?
Thank you. So I think the organisation shares, it's good to see significant progress that was achieved in the Park Sport Environment Programme. I'm particularly pleased with the projects at Cameron Park and at Richardson Park, and the Wallace Street BMX canteen upgrades, which have been really well received. I know it's been a lot of work coming out of the flood and getting back on to our capital works programme, so just want to, Chair, thank the organisation for that work.
Any further discussion? All those in favour of the recommendation? Against, that's carried unanimously. I believe that's all your items. Mr Anderson? Now ask the general manager for? I can't remember the department. Planning and Regulatory Services, sorry, just getting used to the new name. And we have acting general manager? Ms Knorten?
Yes.
How are you? Just as moved earlier, we're at item one. So item one being proposed Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges, resolution number one of 2024. Just in relation to this, this is quite a, for those new to council, quite a complex report. So I might ask the general manager to speak to it or introduce an officer to speak to it.
Good morning, Chair. I guess the, this is a report concerning the adoption of the proposed Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges for 2024. And it's to replace council's current charges resolution. This is an annual exercise, and it ensures that council's charges for trunk infrastructure keeps pace with increases in infrastructure costs, and it applies the producer price index for construction. So the recommendation is that council adopt the proposed infrastructure charges for, which is as detailed in attachment one, and it's pursuant to section 113 of the Planning Act as the Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges resolution. So the relevant officer that can provide details about that is manager for City Design, Nathan Rule. So I'll just ask him to provide some detail of those questions.
Are there any questions around the table in relation to the report? Just have a few, Mr Rule, just if there's any major changes in relation to last year's resolution and charges, particularly anything that might be heavily amended, changed, altered, or if there's any contentious matters relative to those charges?
No, no to the above, councillor. So this is really just an indexation of the charges across the board, just to stay in line with that producer price index, to make sure that we are charging in relation to that. So there's really nothing, there's nothing major in there.
Thanks, Mr Rule. Any questions, further questions? Do I have a mover for the recommendation? Councillor Johnic, a seconded. Councillor Madden, all those in favour of the, sorry, before I do that, any discussion in relation to the motion?
Chair, if I may?
You may, Mayor Harding.
Chair. Ipswich has experienced enormous growth in the past decade, and we anticipate much further rapid growth into our future. Our trunk infrastructure network is not able to be completely funded by infrastructure charges revenue, and while the gap between the cost and the revenue continues to increase. So we must plan future infrastructure responsibly and listen closely to the community about their expectations and priorities for our beautiful city. Obviously, these charges are not a cost recovery, they're great facilities for our community to access and use.
Thank you, Mayor Harding. Any further discussion? All those in favour of the report? Against, that's carried unanimously. Item five, planning and environment court action status report. Just remind members of the committee that if there's to be any particular discussion in relation to matters before the court, then we will need to close the meeting. Is there any questions or concerns in relation to the report that I may need to close the meeting? Just pass to the acting general manager.
Thank you, Chair. This is a report, it's related to the current court actions associated with development planning applications, and it's tabled to be received and the contents noted. If there's questions in regards to it, the manager for development planning, Greg Potter's available to discuss.
Any particular questions? Yes, Mayor Harding.
May I, Chair, may I ask a question but like to keep it public? So if there's anything confidential, let us know. If I may, Chair, the Newgro versus ECU City Council, and the register is 203. Appeal has been listed for a five-day trial commencing the 23rd of May. Just may I have an update on that, Chair?
Before you progress with that, I will declare a declarable conflict of interest in relation to that matter, if you're going to discuss that in this session, open session. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, councillor Antonelli informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item five titled Planning Environment Court Action Status Report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is that one of the respondents, is that the correct term, respondents? In the matter is, has contributed to an election campaign of mine in the past, but outside the legislated declarable period. I invite the other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process.
Thank you. If I may?
Yeah, question from councillor Madden? Oh, you had a question first, Mayor Harding, yes?
I don't think you were surprised because we discussed it. May I just double check that it's outside the relevant term as per the act?
I have been advised it's outside the legislated period, so I am moving it as a declarable conflict of interest and leaving it to my?
And who gave you the advice? Was it the department or?
It was from within our staff.
Okay, thank you very much. And how much was the donation?
That is being declared publicly.
And how much was it?
It was, it was a campaign donation to my mayoral campaign of, I believe, $15,000.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, councillor Madden?
Chair, I was just going to move that you remain in the meeting.
Is there a second to the motion? The report is a receivable note, I believe.
So just so I can clarify, sorry.
I'll open to discussion shortly.
Just to clarify, councillor Madden, to remain and to vote on the motion?
Yep, and vote on the motion. Thank you, councillor Johnic.
I will second that, thank you, Chair.
The motion is seconded, is there discussion? Mayor Harding? Yes, sorry, councillor Cullen. Well, yeah, we'll move the first one first.
Should I declare a conflict of interest with Newgro as well?
We deal with one at a time, don't we? Yes, we do deal with one at a time, councillor Cullen. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favour of the motion? Against? We have, I'll just ask you to remove your hand again for a moment, Mayor Harding. So all those in favour were councillor Johnic, Tully, Cullen and Madden. All those against was councillor Harding, sorry, Mayor Harding, and an abstention by myself. The motion has been carried. Yes, councillor Cullen?
I'd need to declare a conflict of interest with Newgro as well, in accordance with 150 EF of Local Government Act. I'll go through that. To inform the meeting that, of the item with Newgro, I've done driver training and received money for driver training for training their drivers.
Thank you, councillor Cullen. Is there any questions in relation to councillor Cullen's declaration? Mayor Harding?
Yeah, thank you. Is it a current contract or is it a previous one?
Intermittent. So it's not a contract as such, but they use my driving school to obtain licensing from time to time. It could be one truck liver, it could be four. Hasn't been for a little while though, probably 12 months, I suppose.
Right, it's been 12 months since the last one. And if they, will you allow them to continue to book and use the business for training?
Yes, yeah, so they can, yeah, do what they need to.
Just a service provided outside of this for truck licensing.
Any further questions? Yes, councillor Madden?
I'd like to move a motion that councillor Cullen remain in the chamber and that he put any vote on the motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that, thank you.
Seconded councillor Johnic? Any discussion to the matter? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. These are always difficult situations, you know, and trying to match what the interest is, how relevant it is. It's clearer if it's a prescribed interest. But I do note, in this particular case, this is to receive and note the report, that there is no substantive decision being made except to receive and note, and it's just listed there as to where it is. That might change if there was to be some other discussion, but on the face of it, I don't believe there's a conflict so great that it requires the person to leave the meeting, and that's why I'll be supporting the motion.
Yes, thank you, councillor Tully. It's always been my understanding, and I asked the CEO for clarification, that matters of receivable note do not require a declaration. Well, that was certainly historically, but I'm not sure whether it is the case at the moment.
Can I confer with, through you, Chair, the manager of executive services on that one? Would be my general understanding, but? But was there a need to declare it at all at being a receivable note? It's a matter for individual preference as to the level of transparency desired, yep.
Could I just raise that issue? Yes, that's certainly the advice that we received in the past. But on the face of it, just receiving and noting wouldn't automatically require a declaration, particularly in relation to any historic matters. But I'm not sure that would be a universal situation, that it is up to the councillor to declare, but it's a fairly tenuous connection if there's no substantive decision being made except to receive and note the report with no addition to that recommendation.
Certainly since the matter has been raised by Mayor Harding, it's certainly brought it to the fore. So was there any further discussion?
If, if I may, Chair?
Yes, Mayor Harding.
Thank you. Look, we do know that with conflicts of interest, the crux of is, is there a personal or financial benefit? So I look at this for this particular motion because it is just a note, note and receive, but also there's no declarable conflict, but I think it was a substantial matter, and if there is a financial benefit, you know, I guess my decision may be very different. So I just thought I'd be really open with that, and that protects the organisation and yourself, councillor Cullen. Thank you, Chair.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favour of the motion? Against, it's carried, and I note that councillor Cullen did not vote on that motion. Is there any further questions in relation to the report? Mayor Harding, you raised the matter of Newgro.
Yes, so I was just wanting to know an update if I may, Chair.
Through the chair, thank you, Mayor. The hearings pertaining to both of those matters that are included in the court action status report have been deferred, so they haven't occurred. So that is the minor change appeal, as well as the originating application seeking enforcement orders. I guess the justification for that is that His Honour Judge Williamson KC was wanting to hear all three matters consecutively, the third matter being the appeal that the Department of Environment and Science are involved in with Newgro. That's been pushed back to September. So obviously, there's common evidence in relation to all three appeals, hence that's, boy, they haven't occurred.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I might ask the officer too. I noticed that a month ago, there was, there's been some change in the past month. Can you just give us an update on the numbers outstanding as opposed to previous month?
Yes, thanks, councillor. There were 11 appeals on the court action status report. Fortunately, we've resolved six of those, so the list is down to five, which is nice to see. I will say though, as happens, there has been another appeal, there's a submitter appeal that has been filed, and counsel was served, I think it was around the 28th of May. That's in relation to an approval that was granted at 20 Sall Yards Road, Yamanto, for business use bulky goods. Kelly Consolidated, PTYLTV, the appellant in that case. So it's early days, but we'll provide an update at the next committee meeting.
Very good, thank you, keep up the good work. Any further questions? There being no further questions? The motion, can someone? There being no further questions, the motion, can someone like to move the recommendation? Moved by Mayor Harding, seconded councillor Madden. Any discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Just briefly in relation to this, Chair, I note that the number of court actions at the moment has been reduced to five. That is a very small number for a large city in Queensland. Recently, I think it was up to 11 and having five live matters is an extraordinarily low number of matters usually before the planning and environment court, but it can be other courts, the Court of Appeal or even the High Court. We had that case recently. So I think it's indicative to some extent of the decision-making processes in this council that, yeah, they're very rigorous and there are few appeals on foot compared with other cities around Queensland. So I'd just like to thank the staff for getting to this position, which is one of the lowest numbers that we've had for some considerable time.
I would concur with that, particularly, I would say with the level of work and output that our department undertakes each month, the percentage of appeals would be considerably lower again than most other councils. So is there any other discussion? Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, I put the motion, all those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. Item six, the last item of the report, exercise of delegation report. Would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Chair. This is a report concerning applications that have been determined by delegated authority for the period 3rd of May to the 27th of May 2024. The relevant officer that can, oh, sorry, the recommendation is that the report is received and the content's noted and the relevant officer, manager for development planning, Greg Potter, is available to take questions.
Any questions in relation to the report? There being no questions, the recommendation is that it be received and noted. Do I have a mover? It's councillor Tully, seconded by Mayor Harding. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I put the motion, all those in favour? Against, that is carried unanimously. Now back to the agenda, notices, any notices of motion? Does appear to be none. Any matters arising? There appears to be none. Any other discussion?
Just before you close, Chair, with the procedure that this committee can determine the starting time of the next committee. So could I suggest that we take that morning tea break now and, well, I'll move that we take that morning tea break and resume at 20 past 10.
That has been moved. Is there a second? A seconded by councillor Johnnig. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimously. That completes the order of business for today's meeting. Thank you very much for your attendance and thank you to all officers as well. Thank you.